From green jacket to orange jumpsuit.
That's right.
Before we start, I'm gonna have the same conversation a little bit as we had yesterday. I want to remind everybody that this is kind of a sacred hall, of course. Aside from being your county seat and the commissioners' chambers, this is also a courtroom. But more than that, I want to remind you that we all live in the same communities and although we have fights today, we want to make sure that we don't have fights that live on forever. I'm gonna ask those that are gonna want to testify today to please keep that in mind as they come up. I'm also gonna ask that you keep in mind, if things are going the way you want, just because you'd like to speak, don't snatch defeat out of the jaws of victory. Okay? Think about that. And just because you're here doesn't mean you have to speak. So with that being said today, I'm just gonna remind you, if it does come time for you to speak, please direct your conversation to me, not each other in the audience. That's not what this is for, okay? We want to make sure that we're not intimidating anybody, so if you're gonna get mad at somebody, I'm your huckleberry, pick me. So with that being said, guys, thank you and everything for being here, and let's hope we have a very, very fruitful and non-eventful meeting today.
Commissioner, before we get started, can we maybe run down Mark and John? I think they're still in Mark's office.
Oh.
Don't want to get kicked off without our administrators.
I was wondering what you meant by run them down. Hi, guys.
Hey.
It's all right. Come on in.
Welcome. Welcome.
Not getting out of it this anyway.
Darn it. I thought you guys wouldn't notice I was here.
All right. Everybody ready? All right. Good morning. We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a special meeting of Mason County Commission for May 17th. We're gonna go ahead and we're gonna begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Trask, would you do us the honor of leading off the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner District One, Randy Menderlin.
I'm here.
Commissioner District Two, Kevin Schutte.
Here.
Commissioner District Three, Sharon Trask.
I am.
Okay. We have a quorum. So next up is item number four, which is our public comment period. This is the opportunity for people to talk to the commission and the public regarding issues that are not on the agenda. If it's on the agenda today, today is not the time for you to speak at the podium regarding this. If we have a motion, you will be given an opportunity at that time to speak and to testify. So right now, what I'm gonna ask is, in the room first, those that would like to testify or talk to the commission on an item not on the agenda, would you please raise your hand so I could acknowledge you? At which point, I'll ask you to come to the podium, state your name, and perhaps where you're from. I would like to also ask, as a special request, maybe we can pass it around. McKenzie asks that if people do want to speak or testify, that we please get their name down so they'll be able to understand and record it properly. You can imagine how hard that's gonna be to write some of your names without actually knowing them. So there is a list over there, if you want to speak, and you may not even want to speak. But we'd appreciate having that knowledge. So again, if there's anybody that is in the room that would like to speak on an item not on the agenda, please raise your hand, I'll call on you and give you an opportunity. Yes? Would you come up to the podium, please state your name? And again, I want to remind-
This really is not on the agenda.
No, that's good. That's the whole idea for this part.
I've been following in the paper about the short-term vacation-
You have to state your name and where you're from.
Betsy Livesay, 53 West Outlet Creek Road, Lake Nwotzal.
Thank you.
I've been following about short-term rentals, and I have a request. I like everything that I've read. We have a cabin on our property that we've rent out for short-term rentals. I would like for the sheriff-
Please direct all your comments to me.
Okay. I would like for us to have backup by the sheriff's office if we have guests that won't comply with our requests, to calm it down, or to get off someone's dock, or anything like that.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that has an item that is not on the agenda they'd like to discuss right now? I see none in the room. Out on Zoom, if there's anybody on Zoom that would like to discuss an item or mention to have a conversation with the commissioner on an item that's not on the agenda, I'll ask you first to raise your hand if you know how. If you do not know how to raise your hand, I'll give you this opportunity now to unmute yourself, say your name, and allow me the opportunity to call on you. Unmute yourself and say your name if you'd like to attest or talk about an item not on the agenda. Hearing none, we are gonna go ahead and move on to item number five. This is our potential, the conversation regarding the potential declaration of disaster due to the status of Fire District Number 12's ability to respond to fire and EMS requests. And I also think it also has to do with the inability to get insurance at the moment. So with that being said, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Mark, and we'll start the conversation. Mark?
Great, thank you. So I'll start it off, we had a briefing yesterday where we had a discussion, are there any other questions that the commissioners might have regarding the information that was presented?
Nope. I'm curious to see if there was more information that you obtained afterwards.
We have not received any additional information. We have put together a declaration of disaster. And how this works is that if the commissioners pass this declaration of disaster today, this would be filed with the state, and the state would then have to respond in terms of how are we going to address the disaster? So that's kind of an unknown for me right now, because we haven't filed it yet, but as soon as we file it, I expect to hear information back from them very quickly.
Okay. Commissioner, do you have any questions?
Yeah.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So, Mark, again, just appreciate all the work over the past 48 hours on this with, between you and John and our DEM team. You and I had a conversation last evening about some additional sort of related issues if we take this action, and so just curious if we could have a conversation, or you can kind of walk the commission through kind of how the finances, the financial situation at the Fire District would be handled if they're unable to, you know, utilize district assets? How are they gonna be able to manage the financial issues associated with operating the district? Additionally, securing the district resources and assets, as well as doing an inventory of those assets? Just kind of walk us through what the practical implications are beyond emergency response if we do this declaration.
Absolutely. So if we declare a disaster, the first step is that we would set up an incident command team, and we assign resources to that team. So there are specialties in various areas that would have to have an individual to assign to that position. The highest public safety officer is the individual that we would reach out to to be the incident commander, and that would be our Sheriff, Brian Spurling. So once that's set up, the next step is then determining the assets that we actually have available to respond. And so we'd have to figure out, when we report to the state, we have to tell them, this is exactly what we need, right? So we have to determine what assets are available for us to respond. And part of that question is, some of those physical assets that exist, if they're no longer covered by the insurance of the Fire District, which they aren't, the question is, how could we utilize those? And this is a fairly unprecedented issue, so I've done a lot of research, and I've been unable to find this happening anywhere else. So we are kind of in some uncharted territory here, but we would have to define what are these assets that are available, and then we request to the state to provide the things that are outside of our current resources. The challenge that we're having is that some of the neighboring Fire Districts, which in normal operations have a mutual aid agreement, but that mutual aid agreement is based on everybody having insurance, everybody doing initial response, and neighboring districts providing additional resources when they're needed, right? So I respond to a house fire, the house fire is at a stage that I don't have enough personnel to adequately fight the fire, then I call my neighbors, and my neighbors come out, my neighboring districts, or they come out and they help us in those areas. That's based on the fact that you, as the Fire District where the fire is occurring, have insurance, have equipment, have individuals able to respond. And in this case, we don't have that anymore. And our neighboring districts, some of them have been instructed by their insurance companies not to enter into an inter-local agreement or an MOU with Fire District 12. So they're in a rough spot too, because now they're saying, gosh, how do I respond to this and still be covered? And then if I do respond to this fire in Fire District 12, how do I cover my own service area that exists? So all big questions that is the reason why we would be asking the state to provide additional resources to come into Mason County and cover the Fire District 12 area.
So I think maybe kind of to put a finer point on my question, I think we know that there are assets that members of the Fire District, volunteers, administration, will no longer be able to have access to due to the lapse in insure, the cancellation of the insurance policy. If, how do we ensure that those assets are all secured, that the facilities are secured, and that they're not accessing those things and using them inappropriately if we are gonna declare an emergency? Do we have a responsibility, and what does that look like, to ensuring that they're not accessing those assets?
So I think first and foremost, the county's intent and focus is, how do we get assets located within Fire District 12 so that they can respond? Top priority for us as a county is to say, how do we protect the people within this county, or within this district, if there's, if something happens? Secondarily, the inventory piece of that, to say what assets are available. I have a list of assets from the insurance company that says, here's the assets that we insure, that we no longer insure as of today. So we could definitely go off of that list. When we set up the incident command and we have to go out and do that, there is a point where we have to take physical control of that. So in a disaster situation, and I'm sure John Taylor could talk more eloquently about this than I can, but if I were to narrow it down into layman's terms, in a disaster situation, some of the rules kind of fly out the window in terms of traditional responsibilities and roles, and so incident command takes over that. And in an incident command structure, the incident commander is the one that directs all of the work. And so if the incident commander and the team says, hey, we need you to go out and secure these assets, then to what level of security do they need to do that to? I would imagine that they would actually have to go out there and ensure that those assets are there and are available. And if the state comes over and says, hey, in order to protect the life and safety of the public within Fire District 12, we're going to cover you guys, then that team would have to say, are these assets able to respond? Right? There's a ton of criteria associated with, the experts in the Fire and EMS could talk about in more detail, but there's a ton of requirements associated with that. So this team, this incident command team, would have to assess those assets and see, can we rely on these assets to respond? And if we can't, then again, that has to be a request that goes to the state to say, provide these additional resources.
And so is it your understanding that the incident commander can or will make an effort to secure and inventory those assets as part of this?
Yes.
And including assets that are potentially stored in people's, associated with the district's private property?
So have normal, right? I mean, as a county employee, I can tell you that all county assets remain on county property under the control of the county, so in a Fire District, I would imagine that their assets would have to be located within their facilities, especially in a volunteer environment. If those assets are not located within the facilities that we now have control over, then we would identify that to say, this asset doesn't exist, state, we need this asset, so give us something else.
Okay. I think we need to have just some additional discussion on that. It's not gonna influence my decision on a declaration today.
Okay.
But I think as part of this process, we need to hear, once incident command is set up, I'm gonna be really interested in hearing what that process looks like, so that we can ensure that there is no continued use of any district resources by people who are unable to function lawfully as district personnel.
Yeah. So I'd imagine that the assets that are within the facilities, those could be secured, so we'd say, hey, this is, these are assets that, once we assess that they're able to adequately respond, we can tell the state, yep, these are there. If they're not there, we identify the fact that they're not there and request those assets from the state. Not sure how that works, if those assets are not located within there. I think that right now, our focus is, let's make sure that we have the necessary equipment and resources that we need in order to protect Fire District 12, and then identifying those other items that are missing or gone would be a secondary issue, but we would definitely identify those things.
Okay, just one more quick question. So part of the discussion yesterday revolved around the insurance provider, I guess at this point, former insurance provider, since that insurance has been canceled as of 12:01 this morning. Their stipulation was that there could be the potential to be reinsured if two of the commissioners resigned. To your knowledge, has that happened at all?
No.
Okay. So everything is status quo as it was yesterday?
As far as I'm aware of officially, the district is not covered by insurance. That's why we're bringing it forward. The existing elected officials within Fire District 12, I believe, haven't received anything officially saying that they have resigned. If you'd like to talk about that process, we could kind of go over what that would look like, but I don't know if that was one of your questions.
I just wanted to know if they had resigned or not.
No.
That's good. Thank you.
I'm gonna go ahead and ask questions. It's very important to me that we don't have a false sense of security. We have, our attorney over here is not the judge, but we rely on him for advice, and sometimes for clarification, for the best advice he can give us. So the questions I'm gonna ask are gonna be directed at that. If we declare a disaster, in no way does the commission or the structure in 12 evaporate, right? If we declare a disaster, we don't take ownership of all their stuff.
No, we do not.
And we can't issue things to go after people's stuff in their home that may belong to it, because we also don't have any ownership of it. I want to clarify that.
That's right.
Okay. So understand, there's limitations on what we do and what we are doing. So please don't have a false sense of security that by doing this action, these other things are going to happen. We will have to, I can assure you, we're gonna have discussions, just like what you just heard, to find out what authorities, powers, what ways we can use our declaration to protect everything. But just understand, that doesn't mean you just get automatic protection with it. I just wanted to make that clear. I have two things that people had touched on me with, and I want to bounce them off you as well, and see if I have it correct. Over the years, when I was a port commissioner, we were able to, we were looking at building a clinic, and we were going to rent the clinic out to a hospital, this for $1 a year. At the time, that was not considered a gifting of public funds, because it was one entity to another. And I had people contacting me, saying it would be a gifting of public funds. If we were to contract with, we'll say, the surrounding ones on behalf of that area, and have an agreement with the surrounding fire departments under that area, would that be considered a gifting of public funds if they were entered into an agreement with us?
It all just comes down to consideration and the lack of donative intent. So if we're getting consideration, then I would think the courts wouldn't believe that to be a gifting of public funds.
Thank you.
It all comes down to the details and the facts of the agreement.
That's what I thought too. I just wanted to re-verify. Something else popped up, I don't think any of us have discussed. I got an email from somebody in Elma who reminded me that they're not part of Mason County. So I see head nods over there. So apparently, we're gonna have an issue, a disconnect there, because we only have authority to do our part.
We've addressed that.
We have addressed that.
Yeah, we've addressed that in the declaration. So the declaration defines the area covered by Fire District 12.
Uh huh.
Because it's that physical area, right? The majority of which exists within Mason County, but when we define it for the state to say, here's our area of disaster, that's going to include all of the specific area covered by Fire District 12.
Good. And we are allowed to do that? You don't see any issue with that, Tim?
It is what it is, and I think we have to do it that way. That's the best way to go about it.
That's the answer I was hoping you were gonna say.
If Grace Harbor wants to do something on their own, we're certainly not gonna stand in the way of Grace Harbor.
Good. That makes me feel a lot better, because I was worried about that part. Sorry, this is not the time for that. Commissioner, do you have anything?
I do. So yesterday, we talked about the differences between special districts and the county, and where that liability actually lays. Can you guys explain what we talked about, like what we dug out?
As far as the separate legal entities that we're talking about?
Right, right.
Well, I guess in short, it's, Fire District Club's a special purpose district, which is a political subdivision of the state, which is a separate and distinct legal entity as opposed to the county, so is that what you're getting at?
Yeah.
Yeah. So Commissioner Nelland was right, we declare a disaster, that doesn't mean we come in and start taking over the responsibilities of the Fire District, because they are a special purpose district, and we don't have that type of authority over them.
Right, right. And I know that we did discuss the Grace Harbor portion as well, so that was all covered. Let's see. We spent quite a while talking yesterday about some of my concerns, some of them were liability. I want to make sure that everybody is covered, the county, the district, most importantly, the people. And so we discussed that quite a bit. I feel comfortable with what we're doing. I think it's necessary. Unfortunately, we have no other choice.
And there is no playbook on this.
No.
They're unusual and unfortunate circumstances. And as far as all of the research that we've done, we've never seen this happen, but I think the commission is clear that inaction is not the action.
So with that, I'm gonna start off by saying, I absolutely believe this is a necessity, and that needs to be done. With that being said, I have a feeling we're all gonna feel that way, so what it takes at this point is a motion from one of the commissioners, and then we would open it up for further discussions after a motion is seconded.
We wouldn't take public comment before a motion?
Usually we take it, don't we take it before?
I don't think so.
Do we?
I think we make a motion, and then that resides with the body, not the public.
Because we usually read the motion, or we do our thing before they would have a testimony. So let's read the motion then.
Sure.
How we would do it, so that you'll be given your opportunity to testify. Because when we have a regular meetings, we will come back around, we'll take something off the agenda, we will read it to you, and then you'll have your opportunity to testify. So how would we like to word the motion, because I don't have it under that?
So a motion that I would make would be, I move a declaration of disaster due to the status of Fire District Number 12's ability, inability to respond to fire and EMS requests.
Inability.
I'll second.
Okay. So we are gonna do it as a motion, because it was made that way. So it's been moved and seconded that we will be declaring a motion of disaster due to the status of Fire District 12's inability to respond to fire and EMS requests. At this time, with the permission of the commission, which I think we have, we're gonna open it up for public testimony before we take a vote. Is that what I understood? Yep, same thing. Okay. So this is gonna be your opportunity to testify, but I'm gonna ask you a question. Before you get up and you decide you want to testify, do you need to testify? We're not gonna be the father, the priest, or anything else. We cannot go and condemn these other different people or individuals. So if you come up and you want to just bash them, I don't know how that's gonna help anybody. If you want to say some other things that may not be appropriate, I'm not sure how that's gonna help anybody. So please consider wisely, what you're going to say, as it goes on the record, and it goes on for everybody. So my question is to you, again, I'm gonna ask you to raise your hand, we're gonna try and get your name, we may ask for a spelling, if you do want to testify. And again, I'm gonna ask you, direct your testimony to me. Do not look at each other in the audience, do not get angry at each other in the audience. I'm your huckleberry, you pick me and we'll have it. But I ask you again, to please remember, everybody's entitled to a safe, non-hostile work environment. That includes the ones up here, as well as the people there sitting out in the audience. So with that being said, knowing that there is a motion on the floor and a second, is there anybody in the audience who would like to testify? Yes, please. Please come forward, say your name. I think she knows how to spell your name.
Yeah, I've tried it, I'm good.
I'm especially timing it.
Actually, Mark, I just want to make clear, we've never had, during our public speaking, we have a three-minute limit during a motion or anything, we never have.
Oh, okay.
So I just wanted to make that clear, that's why I didn't say it in this time. But please, be brief. We're all in here, we don't want to have to-
Well, you're lucky.
-go through all the things, especially if there's no reason. So please, go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner Nelland. So my name is Kristin Mastfeller, it's spelled on here for you. I'm a resident in Matlock. I am very, very pleased to be here today in support of this emergency declaration. It's a long time coming, as my neighbors know. I had hoped that it wouldn't be under such dramatic circumstances, but nonetheless, here we are, and it's happening. I fully support the commission taking the action today. We've been working with several members of Mason County's team for years on ensuring the protection and welfare of property of my family and neighbors out in Matlock. And so I just wanted to give a thanks to Commissioner Schutte, who's been in this with me way steep from the very beginning, going back several years, Bob, John, Mark, Tim, many of you at the county who have stepped up in the recent years and trying to make this happen for us. I also want to thank Sheriff Spurling, I'll look at Randy, I'll say, agreeing to take on the role as area commander for this endeavor. You have the support of our community, and several of us are working on parallel paths to support you, both in resource capacity and to try to help define your authorities. So please let us know if there's anything we can do to help, but I also want to reiterate that this is the first of two steps that need to happen. So to the sheriff and the county prosecutor, we realize you're incredibly under-resourced. You have murderers, and rapists, and gangs, and child abusers that you have to contend with, but a financial crime and fraud is still a crime. And as taxpayers and voters in this county, our expectations are that you will prioritize these crimes that have happened against the Matlock community, you will investigate, you will prosecute, and you will seek restitution for that, and that your offices will work together on that. The restitution component is especially important, because it will be instrumental in ensuring that our Fire District is made whole financially, and that we return to that fully functioning capacity. And when this, you know, emergency order is eventually lifted, which we're all hoping will be soon. And so we will be fully functional again. We were a functioning, resilient community for generations before Kelly Walsworth and her family entered the fold, and we will be long after they're gone. And so lastly, I'm gonna leave you with this. Representative Dan Griffey introduced legislation in the last session, and it is basically enabling there to be a closure of these legal loopholes with regard to oversight and authority at the state level. It's specific to special purpose districts and corruption. It would give, the bill would give the state auditor's office the authority to make referrals to the AG's office, and it would give the AG's office authority to, and a responsibility to investigate and prosecute. Unfortunately, it didn't make a hearing in the short session, but Representative Griffey is gonna reintroduce it in the next session. So I want all the electeds in this office to take a minute and consider like the extreme resource strain on your offices, that this one individual and her inner circle have just had on county resources in general. And then we ask you to help us lobby for this bill when it reappears. You know, lobby the committee chair, let's get it a hearing, and then we ask you to also sign in to testify on this bill. And talk about and share your experiences dealing with this weird, unprecedented issue with Fire District 12. We also ask that members of this community, both in the room and online, sign in electronically to support the bill. Mason County residents successfully recalled an entire corrupt governing body. That is a big deal. Kudos, Amanda Gonzalez. And, you know, that's an incredible feat that resulted from these community members working together. And so Mason County citizens and officials, we now have the opportunity to make sure that this never happens again to any community in Washington State. So we still have work to do on a lot of different fronts, and I just thank everybody for all their efforts today. Thank you for doing this. I highly, highly encourage you to pass it today. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So is there anybody else that feels the necessity to speak at this time?
Would it be easier to just read down the citation?
Well, that's if they want to speak. Just because they signed doesn't mean they have to speak.
There's an question on there.
Yeah, it says, did you want us to speak? We had them pulled out. I mean, it could just be an easier way to-
Yeah. So, but again- So, but again, you'll go ahead and mention your name, but if you want to speak, now's the time anyways. Anybody else in here that wants to speak, go ahead and raise your hand.
I do though, of course.
Hold on one second. I'll get to Zoom in a minute.
My name's Virginia Toll.
Please come up to the podium, please.
My name's Virginia Toll, and we live in Matlock District. We're in Grace Harbor. Do you have a mutual aid agreement with Grace Harbor to service Matlock area?
That was the question I was actually asking earlier.
Yes, answer that.
So.
If Matlock has an agreement with Grace Harbor to respond, Brady Fire District Twelve to respond out here?
The mutual aid agreement that I've seen has been just Mason County fire departments. So, yeah, I don't have any Grace Harbers on there. Maybe one of our fire professionals could tell us that.
Our taxes are paid to Mason County, but we live in Grace Harbor is our physical address, Monticello. We're in a position out there, and we're a mile and a half from there.
Please direct your comments and discussions to me, and we usually don't have an interaction anyway between them. Questions is a little bit odd for this. This is time for you to testify to us. But as for that, I know that they are looking into that because we just brought that up. That was the first thing brought up. There appears to be some agreements to try and make sure that you are taken care of, and it sounds like the county is going to move forward with it, and if Grace Harbor has an issue, they'll contact us.
Okay, has our equipment been removed from the Schaefer grade back to the community firewall?
I wouldn't know. We haven't even done a declaration of emergency. So, it wouldn't be for us to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please come forward, state your name.
My name is Trina Young, and I am also a member of the Matlock community that's affected by this. And I just wanted to say, especially for the public listening to this today, that should you pass this resolution, the work is not over yet. We would not be here without the work of Amanda and Kristin getting us started years ago. It's been a long haul, and it's been hard. And the amount of grift and issues that have come out of this are appalling. We have, like Kristin said, there's a lot of work legislatively, but also, the local community is going to have to step up continuously, as they have amazingly so far. But it's not over, and I know the last time we had a recall, a lot of people thought that was the end of it. It was all over. It's not over. There's still a lot of things that have to come into play. So, I just want the public to be aware, we need your help still, and there's still a lot to do. And I totally appreciate all the work that you guys have been doing to help get us to this point. And I echo Kristin's concerns that you're there for us when we start trying to get these laws changed in the legislature because at this point, a special interest district is a golden ticket to people who are not interested in the best interests of the community. Thank you.
Okay, so, I'm going to ask one more time, is there anybody in the audience here, before going to Zoom? I haven't forgotten you up there. Anybody in the audience that would like to testify at this point? Anybody in the audience who would like to testify at this point? Hearing none? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and move over to Zoom, and I cannot read that top one, the gentleman wanted to speak. Matt, I'm going to call on you first. If you don't mind though, please tell us your name, even though it's on there. I can't read it. But tell us your name and perhaps where you're from.
Yeah, my name is Matt Mallory, Superintendent Schools with the Marion High School District here in Matlock. My testimony is I would encourage the commissioners to move forward with your declaration and approve that. I have some immediate needs in preserving the assets of the Marion High School District and preserving the safety and welfare of our students and our employees that work here. Moving on to the next step or a healing step in this community is super important. My immediate needs is to secure my facility. Mason County Twelve currently has access to our facility as a fire district. I need to, if the commission moves forward, we do need to work with emergency management and whoever the incident commander is to ensure that our assets are protected in this transition period and making sure that our facility is secure.
Thank you very much. Before, I'm going to ask the commission, I think we have an expectation ourselves, and correct me if I'm wrong, that if we do pass this, that we have open access to our staff to be able for all them to contact us and start to work through those processes. I think that's our expectation.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate for incident command.
Just so the public knows, that is our expectation, that you would be able to reach out to staff so we can try to work through the things that we can work through, not knowing and fully understanding we can't work through everything. But they are going to be available to try and have access, and we'll try to get through whatever issues we can.
Yeah, Commissioner Nethland, I had a personal conversation with Chief Weehlander with Mason, Wes Mason, on Wednesday night. And so, we have built these partnerships already in preparation for this. But there's going to be some immediate steps needed in the community to ensure and protect the resources of the fire district and the residents of the fire, of the area that they serve.
Thank you. And I want to echo, I got to tell you that we're very lucky to have the surrounding fire departments that we have and their willingness to step up the best they can without putting their organizations at risk, especially for being insured. It's a big one. Is there anybody else on Zoom who would like to speak to the commission and testify on this issue? If so, I'd ask you first to try and raise your hand if you know how. If you do not know how, I'll give you this opportunity right now to unmute yourself and just say your name only, and I will call on you. Okay, so with that, I'm going to give the room because I see another hand. I'm going to go back because we want to make sure everybody gets a chance that really wants to testify. I'm going to go back to the room first. Would you like to testify? Please go forward, say your name, and perhaps where you're from.
My name is Mike Brown. I'm from the Matlock area. More towards the Superintendent Mallory's comments is that the district will still hold the Knox key, which gives them full access to the school. And I think that's a very big concern. And I don't know if there, it doesn't sound like there's any way that we can get that back from them. So, I'm not sure how we go about securing the school in that manner.
Thank you. All right, so, I'm going to give everybody one more opportunity. I'm going to start in the room. If so, please raise your hand. I see none. I'm going to ask on Zoom, one last time, if you'd like to testify, please unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you. Hearing none, I will move forward to Commissioner deliberations on the motion. So far before, there's a motion for a declaration of disaster due to the status of Fire District Twelve's inability to respond to fire and EMS requests. Commissioner Shute would look at her.
Oh, I love my girl. Thanks. Thanks. So, the timing of this was pretty good. I've been at a meeting with the Washington State Association of Counties over the past couple of days. In fact, the meeting's still going on. But one of the topics that I brought up was special use districts. And I was kind of relieved and alarmed at the same time that there are other districts having the same issues. So, we could be helping those districts move forward with a path because of what's going on here. So, Mason County again is making history, but in a positive way. And we did talk about Representative Griffey's legislation, and we will have more support from the counties going forward too. So, they'll be, they will sign in in support of this also. Yesterday, I asked that as soon as this declaration is finished, that we get something written from the state. I want something from the state with stating their intentions, whether they are going to step up or whether they're going to send it over to us. And so, we're making sure that going forward, we have a clear path, making sure that everything is covered. We're doing what we need to do to help you guys and to help get back to a little bit of normalcy. I do want to thank the organizers. You guys are awesome and dedicated to your community, and you can see the love and passion that you have. And I want to thank our first responders. You guys have done amazing so far and look forward to seeing what you're doing. I do support this 100%. Read through it a couple of times, read through it with our amazing team to include the EM, John, thank you. Thank Bob also. Tim, Mark, you guys are spot on, along with Diane and many others. So, thank you for this, but I do support this moving forward. I'm not going to talk a whole lot. I just want to say that we're supporting you guys. We do want the best for the county and for your district.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. Just again, thanks for everybody for making out two days in a row. We're trying to kind of build the airplane on the runway, so to speak. And so, appreciate the input and advice that we've been getting from emergency management, but also the other fire districts that are present here, Thirteen, Central, Wes Mason. You guys have all been so supportive and helpful as we kind of figure out what we do from here. And it should be reassuring to not just community members in the room here, but everybody who might be watching this. The overwhelming majority of our fire districts do the right thing every single day. And so, we're talking about one that has gotten it wrong for a while. But there's a great example in this room of people who are committed public servants, who take their oath and responsibility seriously and who put their citizens first. And so, that is the example, and that's what we want to support here. And I think that's why we're doing this emergency declaration. I'm not so much concerned about potentially hurting the feelings of Commissioners Walsworth and Compton. They've had a few years to do the right thing and have chosen at every turn not to. And I think, you know, they still have an opportunity to do that. There's the old saying that the best time to plant a tree is 20 years ago, the second best time is today. And so, today would be a fantastic time for them to prioritize the public safety of their community and allow people who are competent and responsible to come in and lead the fire district into the future. This emergency declaration will do some things to help us move forward. There's a lot of things that have to be done yet. We've heard a lot about that this morning. And so, you just, I want the community members of Matlock to know, you guys might live far away from Shelton and other parts of Mason County, but you're not forgotten. We're here to support you. We're here to help provide for your safety and for the best interests of the community. Today is a sign that the county is willing to work on those things with you and for you and to bring the resources in that need to be there in order to, in order to provide for your public safety. And so, also to Sheriff Spurling, appreciate you stepping up and working with Incident Command. This is going to be a tall task for you, but I'm confident that you have the integrity and the leadership ability and the public safety knowledge to make this work and to protect and provide for the community. You're somebody who has taken your oath of office very seriously every day, and I'm willing to do whatever I can to stand and support you as we go through with this emergency declaration. The last thing I'll say is as we do this declaration and we continue to build out the Incident Command structure, it's my hope that this declaration is not only transmitted to the appropriate people at the State Department of Emergency Management, but it's also transmitted to the governor and to the Attorney General's office. The Attorney General has been derelict in his duty to stand with the community. Prosecutor Dorsey and I have, and Chief Deputy Prosecutor Whitehead and I have had conversations with the Attorney General's office, and they have refused to help provide resources and help investigate the issues that have led to the action that we're taking today. And so, I want Attorney General Ferguson to know that we're taking this action because of his inaction as well. And so, with that, I'm ready to move forward and vote after Commissioner Nethland, of course, has an opportunity to make his comments.
Thank you. First, I want to thank each and every one of you for your professionalism. Today was a great example of how this is supposed to be done and how to treat each other. I can't go far enough to express, when you walk in this room and these type of things are happening, we all know how bad it can go and how quickly it can go the other way. You made sure that did not happen, and I want to thank you first and foremost for that. As there was a comment about, as we're doing this, and we're going to be counting on this date to do some of these things, if the past is any example of the future, I think it's going to be in our hands more than it is anything else. So, the hope is is that you can count on us to do the best we can within the parameters of what we are allowed. But it's obvious from your three commissioners, we've not forgotten you. We're not going to just move on without you, and we're going to stick, trying to do the best that we can to help you through it. And I do know that your surrounding departments are doing everything they can to try and make it happen. And I hope that we can help make some of those rough parts so that they can be able to do it without having to be under the threat of losing their insurance. That's the real sad part about this, is there's no way that those that are, you know, your neighbor wanting to help you is under threat of losing their insurance if they help you. That's a rough time. But if we're in a situation that we take control, maybe that is where this motion really has a big impact. That's my prayer at least. So, just know that we're going to be around, and we have not forgotten you. We have, as you can see, we have heard you. So, with that, I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote. The motion, one more time, a declaration of disaster due to the status of Fire Department Number Twelve inability to respond to fire and EMS requests. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. I will entertain a motion. Oh, I want to make clear to everybody, we're not running away. After the last meeting, we stayed around, and I'm sure that's going to happen now. If you want to talk to us, just come up and yes. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, would we adjourn?
It has been moved and seconded. We adjourn here. No objection. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.